29, then we have two approval not required. One for 32 Mashbug Road and the other for nine seat upon road. At 6:35, we have a continuation of a public hearing for Ashley Stepek, 60 Main Street, a site plan review. At 6:45, we have a covenant release request for Fisk Hill East Realty Trust also known as Berry Farms Road. At 6:50, we'll also take an issue on Berry Hill Estates for the phase in plan in Shippity. Following that with a town plan update, then old and new business, and then adjournment. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of August 29? Any questions or comments? If not, we have a motion to approve as submitted. Dane?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Close no one? Great. Good. Okay, so the first A and R is at 32 Mashbug Road?
Yes. The second one actually has not arrived. They were still working on it. We're not sure if they would be able to walk it in this evening, so they may come later and maybe the next meeting. So the first one, 34 Mashbug Road, this is a lot line adjustment. You can see from your plan, there's a small parcel A that's noted, not a building lot, that contains 9,273 square feet, and that will be combined with property of Gould. And the reason for that is their driveway is, right now you can see the old property line, and the driveway is right on the property line, so they've worked out an agreement with the neighbor to purchase a piece of land from her to give them a little more space on the side of the driveway. I guess that helps with plowing, when they're not putting the snow on her property. So the plan meets the requirements, so I would recommend the board endorse the plan submitted.
Okay, any questions or comments? If not, we have a motion to endorse the plan as requested.
So moved.
Well, second?
Second.
Two? All in favor? Close no one? Very good.
And then we'll skip the next one.
Yep. Let's see, do we have the ticket for that?
Next one.
Oh, it's just about 6:35, so I guess we can just wait a minute and go into that. Okay, it is 6:35, we'll have a question on 60 Main Street. Close no one? Very good. Okay. So the first A and R is at 32 Mashbug Road?
Yes. The second one actually has not arrived. They were still working on it. We're not sure if they would be able to walk it in this evening, so they may come later and maybe the next meeting. So the first one, 34 Mashbug Road, this is a lot line adjustment. You can see from your plan, there's a small parcel A that's noted, not a building lot, that contains 9,273 square feet, and that will be combined with property of Gould. And the reason for that is their driveway is, right now you can see the old property line, and the driveway is right on the property line, so they've worked out an agreement with the neighbor to purchase a piece of land from her to give them a little more space on the side of the driveway. I guess that helps with plowing, when they're not putting the snow on her property. So the plan meets the requirements, so I would recommend the board endorse the plan submitted.
Okay, any questions or comments? If not, we have a motion to endorse the plan as requested.
So moved.
Well, second?
Second.
Two? All in favor? Close no one? Very good.
And then we'll skip the next one.
Yep. Let's see, do we have the ticket for that?
Next one.
Oh, it's just about 6:35, so I guess we can just wait a minute and go into that. Okay, it is 6:35, we'll have a question on 60 Main Street. Close no one?
Thank you. Are you okay?
I'm fine.
Peter, I guess.
So I do have an introduction. So, important call, and approval. It had been mostly residential use, but is in an area of small commercial businesses. In order to accommodate her salon, needed to give her a parking lot, which, there are some wetlands on the property as well. So when she went through the conservation commission approval process, the parking lot was changed to the original configuration. I had seen to this new configuration that, at this time, was, I don't know, 17 feet to back up and turn around, which my concern was, it really wasn't enough to not back on to the neighboring property. So they've increased that easement to 20 feet, and lo and behold, in the meantime, the property had been on the market for some time, and now there's a new prospective purchaser. So the new purchaser needs to sign the easement agreement. We don't anticipate any concerns with that, and that will make up the difference that they need. It will still be a little tight if there are cars parallel parked on 58, but I think it's a workable solution for all to kind of respect the wetland boundaries and give adequate room for maneuvering. So we have reviewed the project by staff. She's been through the design review commission approval, conservation commission approval, and no staff concerns are noted as of this time. So that's my update on this project. I don't know if they have anything to add.
Anything to add to that, or?
Just to clarify, I'm Michael Caplet, and I represent Ashley Stepek. As Ms. Bubon has indicated, the property presently has a 10-foot right-of-way over the neighboring property, 58. The discussion with the present owner, excuse me, who is selling the property, so it's a two-level discussion, you have to talk to the present owner and the prospective buyer. We finally, this afternoon, I think, came up with an agreement whereby the right-of-way will extend to 20 feet wide, which will satisfy everybody's concerns, I believe, and we have an agreement about the maintenance of it. There's more discussion about who is paying for what than there was really about the 20 feet, but I think we're at the closing of it right now. It suggests that if the board wants to approve this site plan, that it be, obviously, no construction, nothing can be done until the agreement is signed by the parties and recorded, okay? And hopefully, this last version I got today will be the one that's going to be recorded. As I, as we've indicated, we already have, I think, all the other permits that we need for this property, and we should be ready to go.
Very good. That's great. Okay, does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Dane, who else said that?
Yes, so I would recommend that you approve the special permit, or excuse me, site plan approval requested with the conditions as noted on pages 56, if you want to meet.
I think we have to declare, you've seen them all.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Anyone want to make their motion? You want to add the condition?
Condition.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Have a great night, everyone.
You too.
You're welcome.
Honey? Good night. Do we need to wait to 6:45 on this, or?
Yes, because they're not here.
Oh, okay. I want to get started on your.
I can get started on my update, if you'd like. So, just find my report. So you may have noticed that the Thai Place is operating out of a food truck at their location. There's still extensive damage to the Thai Place that will be some time before that's fixed. Sawdust was able to open this week. Vision 2020 is not moving back into that location. She's actually moving over to 420 Main Street. So in order to kind of keep his business alive in town, he's been operating out of the food truck. The issue that we have now with Sawdust opening is, they were concerned about parking because he's taking up front parking spaces, so even though there's adequate parking on site, the property owners wanted him to go behind, into the rear parking lot. So he was very concerned that people wouldn't realize that he's there. So for the next two months, he has an agreement with Yankee Spirits, and so there's a photo in your packet. He'll be parking the food truck, kind of the drive aisle as you're, the driveway as you're coming in, so it's kind of on that tree side. So there's sufficient parking there. The kind of trip generation numbers for food trucks is three spaces per truck, so there's plenty over there. However, the agreement's only for September and October at this time. He was concerned that if he went into the back parking lot, people wouldn't realize he was there, and he didn't want to impede any business that Sawdust and the two boutiques might get, because they've been closed for some time. So, not really a concern with that. With the Board of Health approval, he has a license for the food truck through the Board of Health, and the fire inspector has been working with him to make sure there are bollards on all four sides of the propane tank that needs to be brought over there. And then, as I just mentioned, Sawdust Cafe, they were expected to open last week, and they did, so that is good. And then, while they're signing in, I'll just keep going. The historic preservation plan is now complete. I expect the Historic Commission will adopt that at our next meeting, which is October 3rd, and then we will be getting copies to various boards and commissions. We haven't talked about it as a commission, but I would imagine that a representative from the commission will be meeting with different boards and committees, just to kind of update on the plan and the goals of the plan, to make sure that we're all kind of in that mindset as we review proposals that come before us. And then there's a new church at 71 Main Street in the former Fitzgerald Dance Studio, and I don't want to kill the name, but it's Iglesia Pentecostal Missionera Luzentiniblas. And I apologize to anyone for not pronouncing that right, but they have gone to the Design Review Committee, have their signs approved, and I have been out there with the building inspector and the fire inspector to review the property. October 10th, I'll just finish, and then we'll do them, if that's okay, Charlie?
Sure, no, that's fine.
So October 10th, we are scheduled to have a public hearing on a solar array for 200 Haynes Street. However, I just got the peer review check this week. I had requested it a month ago, so I just received the check, so I just signed the agreement for CMG to do the peer review for us. So at this point, I think it's highly unlikely we will be having our review completed by the 10th, but I would recommend that we, unless the applicant feels otherwise, and I'm going to speak to their attorney this week or next week, I think we should open the hearing and hear the presentation, ask questions. There were a couple of butters from the condominiums that went to the conservation meeting, so I think it makes sense to do it that way. We'll also have a few EV charging stations that are being installed at Pilot, and then on October 24th, we'll have the Cornerstone Bank, 200 Charlton Road, they're relocating the ITM to the rear of the property, and that's kind of in anticipation of signalized intersection being installed with Noble. So, and then, next meeting, I will have the draft survey questions. If anyone has any questions they've thought of, please email me, and I'll make sure to include them. I met, Becky and I met with the Open Space Committee on Friday, and we have kind of a working draft going for them, and I think what we would like to do, speaking to Charlie, is take some of the questions from the housing plan, the historic plan, and the economic development plans, and maybe pull some key questions out of those survey and ask it to a wider audience this time around.
Right, yeah, because one of the things, you know, we didn't get an awful lot of response to some of those surveys, although we got some good information, so I think it'd be good to have the key questions out there again as part of the master plan review.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, we're ready for them, if they're ready for us.
I should move.
Where do we go? Or just me?
You're up first there on second, but you can all come on in.
We've got the same problem.
It's all kind of related, so.
Okay, so this is a question.
Want us all up there together?
On Fisk Hill Realty Trust, also known as Berry Farms Road.
Yes.
And Jane, you want to introduce, or?
Sure. So you all, I think, know Matt Sasek, and this is the Berry Farms Road, is the subdivision roadway that's being constructed off of Route 131, and also off of that will be the Blueberry Hill Estates that you just recently approved for the Stellmox, and finally finished up with the Conservation Commission as well. So for them to transfer the property, we need to be able to release Lot 3, so that that can happen. And so we've, we have a covenant on the entirety of the property. I have the figures that I've received from Mr. Sasek. There's about $220,000 worth of work remaining to be done on subdivision road, and we are holding approximately $3 million in property after you release Lot 3. So that's more than sufficient to cover the roadway work. I would expect at some point, as we get further along in the subdivision, we'll probably, we'll be back to release the entirety of it, or, you know, maybe a parcel here and there as they sell. But with that, I would recommend that we, I lost it, you knew I would lost it, lose it if you gave it to me. Somewhere here, I have a lot release that I would like to ask the board to approve. So I have a lot release certification that needs to be voted by the board that would release Lot Number 3, as shown on the plan, which is recorded in the Registry of Deeds, Plan Book 967, Plan 53, from the covenant that has been recorded dated 9, excuse me, November 20th, 2020. And Mr. Sasek can update you on anything that you would like to know?
Anything you'd like to add?
I'm assuming you guys drive by there and are like, "What's going on?" So I could do that really quickly. The, so, there'll be no other requests for partial release until that road is paved. The road will be paved by the end of the season, you know, fingers crossed. The only reason it's not paved either today or within the next couple of days or weeks is, or week, is because we have, we're waiting for a DOT permit, unforeseen permit to cross the road. There was probably plenty of blame to go around here, but when they, when they put the water line in, it's on the south side of Main, we thought it was on the north side, but then one would have expected that there would be a lateral or 145-acre parcel, you know, and on a former town road, you remember that, Charlie? But there isn't, or at least not all the way across. So now we're sitting, waiting for a DOT permit to get to connect our water. The water line is sitting right there, all the way already looped around Fisk Hill. So, all utilities are in. Drainage is connected, waiting for a couple structures that are, you know, special order type things, and then, then we pave, and the season will close with us, with a binder down, and it'll look like a real project. So, as I said, I won't be back for any kind of releases, and you guys have a first, first lien covenant on, on everything, so you're in good shape. At this point, we're in good shape, trying to, trying to exit. If building a road is on your bucket list, I'd take it off. I don't recommend it, but, but we're getting there, so, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments?
No.
You want to ask about the covenant? I'll set on that. Okay, great. Okay, then, we have a motion to sign the release?
So moved.
Seconded.
Question, all in favor? Close no one? Very good. About signing?
Yes, please. And then I'll notify that, and...
Thank you.
I'll run it on. I'm going to start my coffee.
Thank you. Surrender my deed. My.
Yeah.
My. Who you got to know well over there. It was a long run. Yes. I said to them the other day that their level of commitment is unforeseen.
Down. No, it's big. But there was, until we turned on the computer, I think, and then it stopped. We came up at 5 o'clock to do a test meeting that night, so it didn't make the difference. Does this one hit? Oh, thank you.
To be honest, the lighting in this room is much better without that on. As soon as it turns off, I'm like, "Oh, it's nice in here."
I have friends that have gone and feared the view. It's been a long, 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 So actually, I do have that. It's designed plans to make. And they touch them in addition. There was a little design change they wanted to that stop. Five ways. On that, once we get final approval, they'll make the tie-ins, they'll finish up that site and. And then in terms of our mass works grant that we would speak for the design of, say, round out. Um, we are on track to hit our seventy-five percent design by December, which is kind of a benefit. Grant. So they said, I had written to them to ask for an update. Mass DOT's approval for work request, oh, that was to connect to the town. And they actually have scheduled the work for tomorrow night pending that approval. It will be night work. And they are also actively addressing feedback and concerns raised by Mass DOT during. Review period and applying those modifications to the traffic signal design plan to ensure compliance. And they are pleased to inform us that the project schedule remains. We will meet the seventy percent design review milestone by December. And just as a reminder, this is solely engineering, who is now under contract with the town to do the design work. For the signalized intersection using the grant funds that we received. So that's where we are. And then the other project that Mass DOT is trying to tie to this one is All Rig, which was the Starbucks and the convenient MD. And it's my understanding from their attorney that Mass DOT would like them to go up and make a U-turn at this signal. Um, the problem is it wasn't being designed for that purpose, and we're not sure we have the right of way for that purpose. So Noble, All Rig, and Solely had a conference call to discuss this. And Solely and Noble are willing to work with them, as is the town. However, I think they would have to contribute at this point because we won't have enough money to do another redesign. And if it will hold up the design process at all, that's a problem for us. So stay tuned.
Thank you, Jean. Thank you.
One question, what was the part about the U-turn? It would be in front of the Noble area? Is there even enough width of right of way? Would that be a lot more land taking to make that work?
We believe it will be more land taking, but we haven't even done the design on that.
So that means you're going, going eastbound on twenty, listening, coming out of Extramart or coming out of the, the Cracker Barrel, going up that way. If they want to go back to use the Starbucks on the other side, they'd have to make a U-turn there?
Yes.
All right, very good.
So that's.
So that means that there's, there's, there's going to be barriers, Jersey barriers going down there. Or, or the exits, believe in those places, like the Cracker Barrel and everything else, are going to be oriented, so they're only going eastbound.
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't know the answer, one or the other?
I understand.
And I'm not even sure it will happen. So the, so needless to say, the All Rig project is on hold right now. Um, so I'm happy to work with them, but I think our priority right now is getting Noble open.
Yeah, they've certainly been at it for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And they have a huge investment where the others, I know the property owners have been trying to sell their land for some time, but they have an option to purchase. So I think we're not on the same level of investment at this point.
Those buildings in the travel center have been ready for quite some time.
Yeah.
It's over eleven million dollars sitting there.
Yeah.
And then the other money that was put in, even on the EV site and the changes there and all they had to do there. Evocable.
It is.
It's amazing they still are committed to doing it, really.
It's, it is amazing considering they're the only developer I have seen on this entire quarter. And that includes the big projects in Charlton that have been required to pay two, two point five million out of their pocket for mitigation on Route twenty.
Thanks, Keggy.
Thank you. So, do you have any other?
No, I do not.
Right?
I have one thing, I just kind of more, it's a little bit of a question, but something that I was wondering if we could look into is requirements around open space with um, both manufactured homes and existing constructions and reviewing that. I haven't done any research yet or looked at what our current, you know, what currently the requirements are. But when you get to situations like large estate buildings, even if we're talking about here, having updated requirements around what manufactured homes, what's required for open space when we're constructing manufactured homes of any sort. Um, seems like it'd be beneficial for us to review that, as there's been a lot of updates in building processes and procedures uh, over the last few years. So I'm kind of curious about that and looking into it.
So our subdivision control by regulation does require open space, which a good portion of the land that's being donated was also through the subdivision approval process um, with Matt Sussex roadway.
Sure.
The manufactured housing development bylaw is a general bylaw, and it does not contain any provisions for open space. We have, this is our second one in town now, the other is Disturbage Retirement Co-op. Um, there are requirements for clubhouses and active area for, you know, the residents that live there, but no set aside of open space the way the bylaw is written right now.
Okay.
So it's definitely something that we can look at in the future.
Something I think would be valuable for the town.
Yeah.
We're good.
I got two quick things, one, I hope you can simplify down to my level, but basically it sounded like the Thai place is not, would not, if it was up to them, choose to be at Yankee Spirits, is that about right?
I, I actually think he wants to go to Yankee Spirits because.
Okay.
He feels he'll be more visible and will be busier.
Gotcha.
So, yeah.
I was tracking, it sounded like Sawdust was pushing him out.
Oh, yeah, not.
Go parking lot, so.
Not necessarily, I mean, I think, you know, maybe if he could have stayed in the front, he would have been okay, but I think he feels until, you know, they're, they get through their reopening, as we know, when a new business opens, you can't get in the parking lot. And so there's been a lot of anticipation around the reopening of Sawdust.
Okay.
And I know the boutiques have been really anxious for that as well. So I think Cody made the decision that where Yankee Spirits is willing to host him.
Yeah.
Um, he'll be very visible and very busy over there, so, yeah.
Sounds better than how I first perceived it.
Okay.
The second thing was, was the SEDs from the CMRPC conference. Would you guys like an update about that via like email or something, or just like a quick blurb right now?
Quick blurb?
Now, it'd be great.
Okay, so basically, I sat in it, it was about two, two weeks ago. Uh, only went for like an hour and a half, but basically they released their SEDs, which is the central or the economic development strategy. It's good for five years, so twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight. And there's some, some big ambitions that they have between like redoing two ninety, accessways between the Brookfields and Sturbridge, Charlton via forty-nine. So there's a lot of stuff in there, it's, I think it's two to three hundred pages long. So they kind of just dumped that on us at the last minute and said, hey, we want you to vote on, on this being our draft that we're going to submit uh, for approval. So it didn't seem like we had nearly enough time to be able to process all of that. And me get some dialogue with you guys as to how does this fit in, how does Sturbridge enter this equation? So I didn't feel confident, abstained from, uh, from move forward, but nonetheless, it, they get approved, the draft. So feel free to read it, uh, it's open for public comments up until the twenty-eighth, so two days. Again, this is a very compressed timeline. But being said, after thirty days, then it will get forwarded up to the feds, uh, where, where they will look into that. Either EDA or EDO. Which was, which one was it? I'm not even really sure what it's stood for, and I couldn't get clarification.
Development organization.
It's getting sent up there to implement further changes. Um, after the thirty-day deadline, um, after they get the, the public opinions via this website. So the website is cmrpcregalservices.org slash SEDs. I'll send that to the planning board's email, so you guys all have it. So you can review the draft plan and see kind of what their ambitions are. And, um, do the survey so that they can review it over the next two days and hopefully implement that before they send it off to the feds.
Is the goal that they'd implement a lot of that within the five years, or it's just essentially this is the plan we're going for and we'll see how far we get?
The latter. Was, was my interpretation of it.
Okay.
But, I mean, they have some local stuff going on for us, uh, South Bridge, they're doing a lot of innovation housing designs that they're doing out there. They're redoing Quinseg up in Worcester, so there's some stuff that might affect us just through, you know, transit, people coming to and fro of these places. Uh, but that was basically it, there's grant money available. Uh, so if, if that is desired, Jan appears from CMRPC can help facilitate that. And there's also Citizens Board of Planning Collaborative, which I probably might attend, it's a webinar series, just for like newer board members, just understand how like your town works, but also the region, so that's helpful for me, that's going to be starting pretty soon, so CMRPC will release that on their website.
Yes, and to, to let all of you know, we have funding in the budget, if anyone would like to attend any of those sessions. They're relatively low cost, they're a really good opportunity to get some training. In March, usually, St. Patrick's weekend is usually when it falls. They, um, they didn't do it for a few years during COVID, this was the first year they restarted at Holy Cross, a day-long training on a Saturday for board members as well, so. We'll let you know about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll send it right to, the last thing that Janay sent out.
Thanks.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just got one thing, and I did send out an email last night on it, I apologize for sending it out so late. This came about because I had been noticing all summer, all these, what are they, feather flag signs and so forth, we seem to have quite a few of them. So I, I went through and I kind of told them up just to, you know, get an idea. I talked to Jane about it, and she mentioned how, you know, they are allowed, certainly we do have bylaws that allow them. I guess the idea is it's really allowed one per business.
That's correct.
And we do have some areas where clearly, like, one business has two signs and so forth. And then that brought up the issue that I guess Janay and Jane have been talking about a little bit, about the design review, is bringing up some questions over a period of time to the zoning enforcement officer about signs they've noticed, and, and I guess there was a question on the timeliness or getting that information back to them. So I thought it might be good just to bring it up and let the board become aware of it. Maybe Jane can give us an update on this and see if there's any action we should take, either to try to, um, you know, work with Nelson to try to get these things resolved more, or if they are being resolved, to get that information back, both to Jane at the design review. So I don't know if you want to.
I would suggest maybe taking, um, Janay had kind of compiled the emails or, um, locations from the minutes.
Right.
And maybe I can, uh, we could put together a master list, and I could get that to Nelson, ask him to let us know which ones he's addressed and um, an action plan for addressing the other known violations and let you know at our next meeting.
Yeah, I had sent out, you know, along with that later email, I went through the, and tried to summarize those. Thirty-five pages of emails we had to the ones that were highlighted, so I do have a little chart that shows, you know, which ones were out there. So if we can start with that, that would be great, and then we can see whether there's anything we really need to do on that.
Now, is, is Nelson, is he the zoning enforcement officer? Because he's, so that's his, that's one of his other hats he wears.
Yes.
And, and, and the feather flags, um, I noticed one time when down in front of the mill, there was several of them earlier in the summer. And are they just, each business is allowed one? So if you have like three of them in front of the mill store, that might be you, hopefully, there are one for each business.
Right.
Okay, and, and Enrico's Plaza had a couple there, so.
Right, and both of those happen to be for Enrico's.
Okay.
I mean, there are five of them, or there's more businesses, so that's another thing Jane mentioned, the way the bylaw was written, um, you know, it would allow a lot more signs, apparently, like the Milliard could have as many businesses that are there, which maybe is something we need to address. Whether or not something like that should be kind of time limited as well, I mean, they seem to be things that become more, well, you know, more desirable for something that's a special event or something you're trying to announce, I mean, that's the way we used to treat banners before, we'd allow people to have like grand opening for a while. Or even on, on the, um, the, uh, the Extramart on one thirty-one, then you had all the trouble opening with the gas station, I mean, they've got a sign out there, you know, now open, and it's been out there for like six months, I mean, a temporary sign that says now open. So I think we just need to tighten up on those things. I mean, we certainly want to have businesses have the opportunity to let people know what's going on, what's new, what'll create business. But when it becomes something that's just there all the time, it kind of loses the impact.
That, so if you, so there is a section, a separate section in the bylaw for those temporary banners that you talked about.
Right.
And those are generally for a period of fourteen days or longer as deemed necessary by the building inspector. And then the flag provision was added to the bylaw, if you remember, there was a lot of controversy surrounding signs at the time, the businesses thought we weren't necessarily being so friendly, and we were trying to say, well, if you took them down and really only put them out when peanuts were on sale, and not like every day peanuts are on sale. Eventually, I'm not going to look at your peanuts because I've seen that sign for two months. I think I probably quoted as saying leather boots on the seminar that we had on this, but, um, it was a way to try to strike a balance between their need to be able to let people know that they're there and our desire to kind of tone it down. So we went with the flag, and now I think it's not a problem until you get violations, and I think violations get more violations. Because if my neighbor has that sign up, I need to compete, and now my neighbor needs to compete, and she has one, so I'm going to put two, and then so on. So I, I think that's kind of the big problem that I see, is if we don't curb it when you see it, then it becomes a bigger problem. So then you can't really evaluate what a compliant town might look like. So I think the first step in thinking about, do we want to make changes or what those changes might look like, are we need to kind of clean up what we have? And then look at it with kind of fresh eyes and say, oh, you know what, this is still a little too much, or you know what, now that it's cleaned up, it's really not so bad. I think the multi-tenant properties are the most difficult. Because we did have for a while, back in the old bylaw, it could only be one sign at a time. So people had to sign up through their landlord, and in some cases, like the Milliard, they would have, um, Christmas specials that were overlapping. And then there was like competition for that one week of the sign, so it's difficult, but it is getting pretty messy out there right now. There's a lot of stuff.
Is there, is there a fine associated with, being cited by?
Normally, he would go and speak to the party, and then hopefully they'll remove it.
Right.
And then if they didn't, he would send them a written warning.
Yeah.
And then ticket under twenty, we have twenty-one D, non-criminal disposition. So, so there's kind of a process that we follow.
I think after speaking to somebody, they would, oh, gosh, you know, they would just move it, yeah.
And then the ones that people just leave stuck in the side of the road, sometimes he'll just go through and pick them up and throw them in the back of the truck and bring them here, and then people come and retrieve their signs, so. And I will send him a letter.
Okay, great, very good, thank you.
From my two cents, I totally agree with Charlie. I very much don't want to spend my time making a witch hunt about signs and businesses which are a vital part of this community, but if it's black and white, it's black and white, and we all have to play by the same rules.
Yeah.
I don't go around day to day hearing a lot of feedback from anybody in my life in this community about the signage, one way or the other. Um, so if we abide by the black and white, and it hurts, and somebody comments on it, then we can make a change, but otherwise, I feel like the rules are the rules.
Are the feather signs the only ones, like, the other types of signs like yard sale and all, it seemed to have time limits?
Those are, so yard sales are different, they can be put up so many days prior to the yard sale.
Mm-hmm.
And then they need to come down after, so these are really business signs.
Event-based, any signage usually has an event, you know, unless we're permitting it, affixing it to a building, or otherwise, you know, going through a process of approval. These feather signs, I imagine they, they don't.
So each, uh, business is allowed to have one twelve-square-foot sign, feather flag, um, feather flag or other flag.
Mm-hmm.
And it can be something that simply says open with maybe, maybe it's a hair salon, so it has a blow dryer on it. Um, just using that for an example, or it could just have their business name on it, so each business can have one.
But we treat them as permanent?
Yes, and they, they're exempt from getting a permit, they don't need to get a permit, but they can only have one.
And that would be the only exception that we have in the signage bylaws currently?
Only exception.
Well, here again, of, of, that type of sign is not a permanent sign, it's usually put into the ground, it can be easily removed at the end of the day. It's not meant to be a permanent sign. Do we have other classes of signs that are also, uh, I would say not permanent, temporary, but used, can be used essentially as a permanent sign?
A-frame signs can be.
A-frames.
So we have certain square footage requirements, twelve square feet, each business can have one, they have to match either their, um, signage that was approved by the design review committee, or they can be black and white. Um, and those, you still get a permit. And those, you still get a permit for those, but, you know, it can be considered part of your permanent signage. Other than that, each business can have four signs within the confines of the town, not counting the A-frame or the flag. One may be freestanding, and one may be on your building. You can have two on your site and two off-premise. So you'll see, this is a good example, Stirbridge Pottery, they have one on the corner of New Boston Route twenty. So that's an off-premise sign to direct somebody to their property. So that's another type of legal sign that you can get a permit for.
But these were all permitted and they went through a process and that sort of thing?
Yes.
So the feather signs are essentially that exception, it's a loophole.
It's not a loophole. It's specifically called out in the bylaw as something that you're allowed to have.
Right. And the intent really was when they're like flags and things like that, I mean, they're not really, they're somewhat temporary, but in other words, we don't have a specific time limit on them.
Right.
But when they start to get faded and torn, you think that they sort of missed their, you know, purpose, and so you'd hope they take them down. But in some cases, you can see things that are out there for a really long time, and they haven't really been moved or changed. And, you know, they're harder to read now because they've been out there so long.
It becomes visual clutter, essentially.
Exactly. It's a lot different than the concept was. We've got something new to announce, you know, we have a new this and something, we want to put it out there, we want to attract people during that period of time when we're trying to promote this. And I think it's gotten away from that a lot of years when we have fourteen signs kind of saying, they've been there all summer.
The intent was for temporary use, essentially.
Exactly. To be able to have, you know, a business highlight something that's important, to try to bring new business in for something they've created. I mean, that was really
Or that they're open.
Or that they're open, exactly.
Open.
Yeah.
We also have a section in the bylaw that your signs have to be maintained in good condition, which admittedly is a little subjective. My idea of good condition might not be somebody else's, obviously. I've had this conversation. It's not always somebody else's idea of good condition.
Keeping it up as long as possible so you don't have to go back to permitting for replacement.
And some of those that don't have a permit, I mean
No, the flags, you don't, you don't need to get a permit for that, but you should only have one, twelve square feet. And you should be free to, you know, replace it as, you know, if you want to announce opening or sale or cupcake day or
It's also very possible a lot of managers and business owners may not be aware of that specific regulation that is limited to one.
Right.
That may be. And it is, it is a good tool.
What is it?
To have that type of signage
Oh, it is. I think it is.
Certainly is valuable.
Good point. I mean, we have the regulation, and it really is. The zoning enforcement officer should be the one that is communicating that information that, look, we can only have one. Or, you know, if there's something that needs to be changed, we're looking at later.
I'll also just add, the last thing I said was the rules are the rules. But I think this board has been exceptionally amenable to every signage waiver I've ever seen come across in the X years I've been here. I would also be very open to revising the sign regs to be more lenient if that's a comment that we start to hear. Aside from that, it just seems like we don't need to go rewriting the signage codes to accommodate what we're seeing unless there's a dialogue with the community about a desire to do it. Therefore, the rules are the rules.
Yeah. And I think our, our last update was in response to that. So that's when we added, you know, extra menu boards.
I wasn't here for that.
Right.
So in what format did you hear that comment? Was it just emails to you, or people would show up and have concerns, or was there a lot of signage stuff that we didn't give waivers to?
Yeah, we did have a signage subcommittee.
We had public hearings. We had public hearings for business with residents.